Council meeting for today, Tuesday, January the 21st, 2020. I'm going to give the invocation. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Tim Lark. Please, Steve.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. Lord, we pray for those in our community who are sick or hurting, Lord. Lord, we pray for our military and for wisdom, Lord, for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Good, please face the flag. Join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Okay, so we need to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2020, regular meeting and dispensary reading.
Somebody?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, we need to approve the agenda.
Counsel, we have one add-on request. It's adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affects property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace electrical service to plants 1 and 2 at the water treatment plant at a cost of $49,500 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Funds, first and final reading.
So move.
One second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. If anyone has their phones, if y'all could put them on silent. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, so we need to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes, sir.
Make that motion, approve the agenda as amended?
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, any ceremonial matters?
Yes, sir.
Guests to recognize? Go on to committee reports. Stacy Fernandez, the City Finance Director, is going to give our monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, counsel. I've distributed the December 2019 financials, and you'll see we're trending pretty much where we did all year. Revenue is at 107% of budget, and the general fund portion is 103%. Our expenses by fund are 95%. Page three, our year-to-date collections, ended $100,000 less than last year, but still a strong $49.5 million. Page four is our manning. For December, we had 676 employees to last month's 667, and we're still 25 below budget. Finally, our water and sewer. For December, we're at 110%. Year-to-date and the rolling 12 months are both 67%. That's due in large part to a lower revenue. We had a much wetter year in '19, and then we're at 76% of budget. Have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Gordon Mosley, the Assistant City Attorney, is going to give our monthly property acquisition update. Gordon?
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
It's almost high, Gordon.
I'm going to give my monthly project acquisition update. First, I'm going to go to the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Project, specifically the north area. Just to let y'all know, we're going, one of the most complicated parts of this is the Brigham Dentistry and the Green Acres Office Complex. We had Charlie Cool do the design on this, and basically, we're taking some parking spaces away from Brigham Dentistry, and we're going to give them those same parking spaces on a track right here that the city already owns. We're also going to, Green Acres Office Complex, there's going to be a little road right here that they're going to dedicate to the city, that the city will maintain. And ultimately, Citizens Bank Drive is going to go from right here, and then it's going to go down and connect to the Green Acres Office Complex. I handed out to y'all a letter that Mark sent to Bill Ledbetter and Donnie Johnson. They represent Green Acres Office Complex. And basically, they requested just that the council pass a resolution, if that's agreeable with y'all, that y'all acknowledge this letter. And all that letter states is that after a certain amount of time, 90 days after the completion and acceptance of the project, that this road will be started, this extension of Citizens Bank Drive. And so, what I have done is I gave y'all the letter that Mark provided, Mr. Ledbetter and Mr. Johnson, and if it's okay with y'all, I can go ahead and prepare a resolution that the city council formally acknowledges at the next meeting.
What was the theory of this? This was to offset something that happened as a result of our taking the right-of-way?
Yes, sir. This project, this road, is going to really hinder their entrance, ingress and egress from the property. There's, because this is, it's going to affect the State Highway Benton Road, DOTD has stipulated that in order to come out, we're going to have to put a median on Benton Road. And so, it's going to be, it's going to be a problem for people traveling northbound on Benton to take a left into Green Acres Office Complex. So, this Citizens Bank Drive is just an offset because they're not going to be able to turn that way. We're going to just extend Citizens Bank Drive so that it meets the Green Acres Office Complex in their parking lot.
That means that light is going away at Citizens? Isn't there a light there now?
No, sir.
No, it's going to stay.
No, there's a light, but it's not going away. Well, there's one, Mark knows this, we met with, what was it? What's his name, Jim?
Jim Olia.
Olia, yes. And they went through the process of notifying and deemed that that light would stay. Otherwise, we'd never been able to get out and go left.
That's one on Benton Road, right there? Comes into your?
Plantation. Drives on the one to the east.
Why wouldn't the median just have a turn lane in it?
It's a part of the design, from what I understand, and again, that's an engineering question, but the way I understand it, there's not a turn lane in this median. It's going to be a very substantial median, that there's not going to be a turn lane possible. Is that the way it is, Mark?
I was wondering how long you were going to sit back there, Mark.
You wanted to stay back there. Gordon was doing great. Kind of the chain of events was, we wanted to create a new big intersection on Benton Road, where the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway ties into. DOTD says, okay, but Citizens Bank Drive signal's got to go away. We say, please, no. So now, we're looking at a design waiver. Took about a year to get that. And part of the, part of the design waivers that many driveways go away on Benton Road, including Brigham Dentist. So now, they have to share a driveway with Green Acres Office Park. So now, Green Acres Office Park loses some parking spaces. So they come back to us, how about this driveway we're talking about? And that's how we got to where we are. What about the driveways to the houses on Benton Road? Are they going to affect those? They're out of the equation. There's no. Is that where the roundabout's going to be, right there, where the red light is? There's no roundabout. They took that away? This is a.
No, there's never been a roundabout there.
Classic, red light, green light, intersection, just north of Citizens Bank Drive intersection.
And there's too much going on right there to put in a turn lane.
There's a whole bunch going on.
Right.
And the elimination of a lot of these driveways makes traffic flow good enough for DOTD to give us a permit to allow us to build that intersection.
You got, you have a light where it feeds into Benton Road?
Yes, sir.
And then you have a lot of Citizens Bank Drive still?
Yes, sir.
So those are pretty close together.
About 600 feet, I think.
And so, this drive that we're agreeing to put in?
It's kind of a, it's kind of a backdoor safety valve for Citizens Bank Drive, as well as the folks at Green Acres Office Park and the Brigham Dental Clinic.
Is it going to feed into Walter O. Bigby?
No, sir. It goes underneath the bridge. You see the green?
Yes.
There. That's a bridge up and over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks that ties in on Benton Road. And then this little driveway we're talking about will meander underneath that bridge.
Okay.
And then tie in over there at Green Acres Office Park.
Got you. And we're going to build that road?
Yes, sir. As per my letter, if you're agreeable, we're going to build that road once the bridge is complete. If you try to build it prior to that, obviously, it's going to be destroyed with the bridge construction.
All right.
Any other questions?
Just the road, no utilities or anything?
No, just two-lane street.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
All right, hang around, Mark.
Going on to the Melrose Plantation Project, we're still doing some acquisition work on there. We have four properties left. Cool Engineering's doing the construction plans for the street. Man Shack is doing the construction plans for the water and sewer. And then going to Coleman Street. Mark met with DOTD in December to go over the right-of-way plans, and we're expecting that those right-of-way plans will be approved by March or April. That's what they indicated. Okay, I don't have Viking Drive in there, but with Viking Drive, we submitted the right-of-way plans. They had a couple of critiques. Cool Engineering resubmitted the right-of-way plans, and so now, we're just waiting again for the approval of the final right-of-way plans. And then lastly, we have these two utility projects. We're still trying to work out the details with the property owners in order to close on those projects so that we can begin the projects themselves. And that's all I have today.
Okay.
Most of the right-of-way that, or probably all the right-of-way that goes with the Teague Parkway, is that, is, do we now own that?
The authorized Teague Parkway?
I mean, the Bigby Carriageway.
Bigby, we do own most of it. We still have about nine properties, nine properties left that we're going to have to deal with. There's a couple of, you know, that, it's, the Brigham and the Green Acres Office Complex is just real complicated because we're taking little slivers away, and we're compensating them. So, we had to get Cool Engineering just to design the parking lot, you know, so that we could have a plan.
Didn't agree.
And they'll agree to that specific plan.
But on further, we're all, our construction's going on pretty well. That stuff is all, those properties in there are?
Yes, sir. The initial phase, phase one, it's, you know, we still have a couple of properties left, like down here, a couple of expropriations. We have one property, it's the Block Investors we're having to acquire, but there's a mortgage on it, so we're having to get a partial mortgage release on that property so that we can acquire that. And so far, the lender's been agreeable with that process. But most of it, as you can see, is green, and so, everything that's green, we have acquired.
Yeah, that little part where the red is, that's in Hamilton, isn't it?
This is East Texas, that's East Texas, right here.
In Hamilton.
In Hamilton.
Yeah. So the main, the main part of the project, you have all the right-of-way for that?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, sir. Other than, you know, these couple parcels right here at this corner, Mr. Jim's Chicken, Joseph Young is another property we're still working out. There's some succession issues there, and so, we're just having to work with Out-House Council, just working through those little details.
Any other questions for Gordon?
Great.
Thank you. Yes, Mark?
I mentioned to you last time that saving Hamilton Road for maybe a later phase would be a way to save some money. So, if we decide to go through with that, I think everybody liked the idea. But that means we don't necessarily absolutely have to have those corner properties now. I think it's a good idea to go ahead and acquire them so that we'll own that right-of-way when we decide to do Hamilton Road, but just wanted to point that out to you.
Yes, so we're going to go ahead and acquire the properties. Right?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If there are none, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to transfer $1 million from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund into the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund to be used to supplement existing funds in the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to dedicate $1 million from the 2016 Sales Tax Bond Downtown Re-Envisioning Fund to be used to supplement existing funds for the Coleman Street Improvements Project. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. What's your name?
Larkin.
Okay, motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to dedicate $600,000 from the 2018 LCDA bond funds to be used to supplement existing funds dedicated to the Viking Drive Widening Urban System Project. Final reading?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to reappropriate $3,150,000 from the Land Acquisition Fund to be used to complete right-of-way acquisitions for the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to reappropriate $62,000 from the Parks and Recreation Salary and Benefits to contract services in the Building Maintenance Division to provide for private contractor for lawn maintenance at City Hall, the East Texas Fuel Station, and the Fire Training Center on Shed Road. Final reading?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to fund improvements to the Industrial Drive Pump Station at a cost of $10,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. Final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, we'll move to new business.
Counsel, number one under new business, witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-20-01, the 42-inch water main extension project. We received a request to continue this till February 4th, so we're going to add this to the February 4th agenda.
Okay, so we'll move to number two?
Yes, sir. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-20-02, water tank rehabilitation and painting, Louisiana 71 South Tower.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $2,263,000. From the Water Capital Contingency Fund, there's one addendum that changed specs, bid forms, drawings, provided questions and answers, and a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting and the meeting agenda. The first bid is from Royal Bridge, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $4,488,000 even. The next bid is from Southern Road and Bridge LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $1,963,250. The next bid is from TMI Coating, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,784,500. And the last bid. From Utiliserve Company, Inc. The bid bond is included. All right, here it is. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,785,200. Ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Trying to get it to show the votes. It was a unanimous vote, and the motion carried. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number, there it went. Bid number P-20-03, water tank rehabilitation and painting northeast tower?
The engineer's estimate for this project is $2,486,100. There is one addendum that changed the specs, bid forms, drawings, provided questions and answers, and a list of the mandatory pre-bid meeting and the meeting agenda.
Stacy? What was the engineer estimate on?
I think it's wrong on the tabulation sheet. It's the same on the tabulation sheet as it was for the last. P-20-2.
Which is $2,486,100. If you could draw a line through that, please. The first bid is from Liberty Maintenance, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $4,138,220. The next bid is from Royal Bridge, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $4,383,500. 4383500. The next bid is from Southern Road and Bridge LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,072,750. The next bid is from TMI Coating, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,886,000 even. And the last bid is from Utility Service Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $2,786,700. Ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Thank you, Stacy.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-20-04, sewer sub-basin B.C. 04 rehabilitation.
The engineer's estimate for this project is $774,000. From the Sewer Contingency Fund, there is one addendum that made change to the specs and provided a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The first bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $737,739. 737739. The next bid is from Horseshoe Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $565,895.20. The next bid is from PM Construction and Rehab LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $677,406.50. And the last bid is from Pulli Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $969,100. Ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, number five.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the engagement of an employment service for the hiring of temporary contract employees for labor use for the Bossier Civic Center for the events requiring additional manpower for any nighttime turnaround requirements. First and final reading?
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution amending Resolution 91 of 2019 for the organization of the City Council, providing rules for the council and otherwise providing with respect thereto. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Got a motion, and a second, comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Mr. President, I wanted to ask a couple things on the resolution. Um, if I can read it. So under the sergeant of arm, would it be wise to also consider the Bossier PD? I know we're going to have the marshal here, but just for the purpose of having him included in the resolution?
What do you think, Jimmy, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we could add him as an alternate source of enforcement.
Okay, that's my first thing that I would like to consider. And then, under the addressing the members of the council. So we, we know that a person who comes before the council will address us, but it seems that this, in this division of the resolution, we should also include that they have to address the chair and us, the chair, and also, they cannot address the mayor as well, because he's sitting here. And because someone could think it's appropriate to do that.
Yes, I agree. You agree with that?
Yeah. What, do we have to reintroduce it, or?
No, sir, it's just a resolution.
Yeah. And so, I think, I think that was my last observation.
Do we need a motion for us to?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make the motion that we adopt Mr. Darby's proposed amendments.
So any comments from the audience?
Need a second.
Oh, I need, I got a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please vote.
That was only amendment, right?
Yes, sir, that's the amendment.
Now we need a motion?
Well, that's, this one's not finished yet.
Oh, sorry.
I'm still waiting on Mr. Irwin, Mr. Darby, and Mr. Montgomery.
Wow. Getting ahead of my own self, weren't I?
I'm sorry.
I voted for something. I thought that was it.
Okay, so that carried. Now we need to vote on the resolution as amended?
Yes, sir.
Make the motion, we approve the resolution as amended?
Second.
Got a motion, and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? So we need to vote. I, I don't have, okay, here we go. Council, please cast your vote.
I had to reset everything, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that motion carries.
Yes, sir. Approved report of change order number one for the North Side Drive project for an increase of $10,379.87. Total cost of contract with increase $475,077.18.
So move.
Second. Got a motion, and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affects property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to replace electrical service to plants one and two at the water treatment plant at a cost of $49,500 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Funds. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Got a motion, and a second, any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, that's all of our items for new business. Are there any announcements from the council? Mayor, would you like to say anything?
No, thank you.
Not everybody have a good afternoon. This meeting's adjourned.